Paid in the amount of $880,940.54. Manual checks in the amount of $39,437.29. Payroll liabilities for 11/28/2018 in the amount of $450,121.57. For a total of $1,370,499.40.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
I did have a question on page seven. Top of the page, the Leclerc Irrigation District payment. I wondered if Ms. Harris could just kind of explain the purpose of that fee or that expense?
Your honor, this is for the costs associated for the city of Riverton to pay for ditch water that is processed through the Leclerc Irrigation District. The district can transport approximately 375 CFS per year. The average water delivered in 2018 was 203 CFS. There is a figure that is determined that the city pays approximately 4.926% of that, and that is what that dollar figure is derived from.
Okay. So there's no relationship to the fees that the citizens pay for their irrigation fees that they pay?
So the irrigation maintenance fees that citizens pay actually provides for the maintenance of the headgates and the ditches that will allow the water to distribute throughout the rest of the system. There are some areas of town that are on a private ditch system, but others are also on the city-maintained ditch system.
Gotcha.
So that's what that covers. The fees that are charged to maintain that, the city collects approximately $30,000 per year for that.
Okay. Do the expenses for that overall process exceed the $20,561 that's in this report?
Well, we receive approximately $30,000 from the citizens.
Right.
This bill in itself was just slightly over $20,000, but there are also salaries, wages, benefits, and other expenses associated with covering the ditch maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye. Motion passes. Any other business to come before the committee?
Your honor.
Yes.
We also have a claim for $659,919 on the claim approval list. It's listed on page two for Century Companies.
Yes.
That covers the costs associated with the general aviation rehab project as similar to the last claim that we had for them. I am seeking approval for payment of that claim today, and we will cut the check and send that out upon reimbursement from Wyoming Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. And that's the percentage that we're in charge of, that we're going to be covering of that, correct? We've already discussed previously.
Right. This is for the pay app itself. The FAA pays 93.75% of that, and the state of Wyoming pays 2.5%, and then the city is obligated for 3.75%. So because it is so large, 93.75% of that will be coming from the feds.
Right. In other words, final bill for this is going to be a lot less.
Yes.
That's what we like to hear. Okay. Anything else?
None, your honor.
No, your honor.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned then at 6:49 PM.
I now call the December 4th, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Bailey would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Larson will issue an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Riverton as City Council. Father, we would ask that thou would watch over and bless us with insight and understanding that we may do the very best for our citizens. Father, we're mindful of the recent death of our former president. Ask that thou might comfort and watch over their family. Humbly we ask this, the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. What a crowd. This is pretty exciting. You know, most of the time, city council meetings have two people in them besides the council, so once in a while, a little bit of controversy is a good thing, right? Okay. So would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Lance Godey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I'm present. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Sean Peterson from tonight's meeting.
Motion to excuse Sean Peterson from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes, I declare that we do have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any items that we need to change on that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes, sign the motion. Carries communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Your honor, council members, I am Brad Tyndall, President of Central Wyoming College. And upon the sage advice of Councilman Godey, he thought it might be a good idea to provide an update to the city every once in a while, and I think it's a really good idea. So some of the updates I'm going to provide, it shouldn't take long at all, because I'm just going to try to say this really fast, but I think it's good, you know, as an important member of the community, the college that is, that we keep abreast of what we're doing and look for synergies and things like that. So as many of you know, the college has conducted around 13 ag and equine forums this last year, and we have commissioned a regional ag sector analysis funded by the Economic Development Administration. And we saw the preliminary results of this a few days ago, and we tried to invite folks last week, but there were so many activities going on. But this group that has done the ag sector analysis will be back in January, and our intention is to show it as many, the many leaders groups, including members of this council and from Land or in other communities in our county, the results of this, and I think it'll tie in very well.
If you can't hear?
Can't hear. Is the microphone, is that better?
Can you hear that?
All right.
Okay.
Too tall.
I did kind of crawl out of bed for this, but I do need to man up and talk louder. I apologize. So the college has just completed an ag sector analysis. We commissioned a study to try to look at ways that the ag sector in Fremont County can really advance and grow, and it's very much something that ties to the town of Riverton's development as well. So the group that we commissioned for the study was Orbis Advantage, and they pretty much do economic development oftentimes for cities and towns in Wyoming. So it was kind of a perfect thing, because they're very cognizant of, you know, where the county goes, the town, and they can rise together, ships arising with the same tide. And so the results for the final study will be presented to various groups in January and February, and I think it'll tie in very nicely with what the town is doing, the city of Riverton is doing, and their planning. I think there's things that if we work together, we can do some great things. Some of the results, the preliminary results spoke to the possible advantages of if you organize producers, such as cattle producers and farmers, and if you have more food processing, and if you can identify and expand the demand, you can actually grow the value-added ag market in the county, which could have really important results. If you can imagine, you know, more meat stores and food stores and things on Main Street, a lot of cute products that would attract more people and capture more people as they drive up to the Tetons and Yellowstone. So I think it has a great economic potential, and we're excited to get the final results and to share them with the community. So as you can tell, this is an economic development effort, and it's not just a workforce effort. So the approach that we've taken of late at the college is to focus on economic development hand in hand with workforce development. In the endowed, the governor's endowed study, they found that 60% of the students in Wyoming leave the state because there isn't enough opportunity locally. And so obviously, if we're a workforce institution, and we are, we have to think economic development. We can't just, you know, grow new students, so to speak, and export them. We like people to stay and grow the economy. We like our family and friends to stay local. It's fine if they go see the world for a while, but it's certainly nice when they come back and support the hometown. So a lot of people ask about, like, what's the status of the ag and animal science facility as it's officially known in the state? We're calling it the Rocky Mountain Complex for Ag and Equine Sciences, and it's basically the facility that has been reported on in the paper in County Ten and elsewhere. It's basically an $18.3 million facility. It'll have two indoor pavilions or arenas. The big one will have kind of not very fancy, but nice bleacher seating, so an indoor facility. I think will have substantial importance for our community. There will also be an outdoor arena, and in addition, about a 3,000-square-foot meat slaughter and processing instructional space. People have asked me, saying, "You guys are going into production, and you're going to do meat processing." I go, "No, we're college. We might, you know, slaughter one or two animals a week," you know, "just to teach the point." So, but obviously, if we're going to be doing the workforce piece, we want to see people expanding in the slaughter and meat processing arena. So I feel like we're doing our part, and we need to now partner with others to kind of advance the whole entire economic picture. One thing that, and I mentioned that it's an $18.3 million facility. We have probably more than half of that kind of lined up, and we're getting closer to the finish line, and there's a bit of an urgency. Part of the reason why the budget number is so high is that 3 million of that is really in contingency and inflationary buffer that the state put in. So what that means, if you could snap your fingers and if it were built tomorrow, it'd be $3 million less. And so there's definitely an urgency for us, so we're working hard to get, you know, more state funds, federal grants, and local and regional philanthropy. But I'm confident we can get to the finish line.
I can't hear anything.
Am I drifting again? I'm sorry. So anyhow, so we're making good progress on the, this Rocky Mountain Complex for Ag and Equine Sciences. We're making, we've got about over half of the funds, I think, lined up, and we're rushing to raise the rest of it through state, federal, and local means. And so one of the questions we're grappling with, which I think might be good for the community to think and leaders here, is what we should do with our old Equine Science Center. Because once we build a new facility, we won't need that. And so some of the thoughts we've had about, were about, you know, keeping it and possibly availing more opportunities for the horse enthusiasts and people wanting to start horse enterprises. And, but we may need to have to partner with the folks to figure out a solution there, because obviously you have to maintain it and coordinate it. But I think with the new facilities we have in mind, and especially if we keep the old Equine Center, I think that if we partner with folks in the community, possibly with an events coordinator or something like that. Currently, the college and the city coordinate together the RREC through a partnership, so maybe through another type of partnership, we can do a whole lot to leverage these great new resources that we have planned. So once again, excuse me for my cold today and my lack of sufficient voice, but if anyone, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Brad, for coming. Anybody got any questions? Thank you for coming and updating us on that. The next item is our consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor. Approval of the minutes, November 20th, 2018, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, November 20th, 2018, executive session. Approval of the minutes, December 4th, 2018, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for December 4th, 2018. Ordinance number 18-015 on second reading. Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 13.04, billing procedure for public services. And I'll read that by title only. Proposed ordinance number 18-015 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.04 Billing Procedure for Public Services. Sections 13.04.040, payment arrangements. 13.04.060, utility deposit. 13.04.070, service transfer. 13.04.080, utility bills sent to renters. And 13.04.110, base charges for services. And repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. An ordinance number 18-017 on second reading. Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 13.08, Water Service System. I'll read that by title only. Proposed ordinance number 18-017 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.08 Water Service System. Sections 13.08.010, definitions. 13.08.030, promulgation of rules and regulations by city administrator. 13.08.060, trespass or interference with utility property. 13.08.090, exposure of pipes to frost. 13.08.170, fees, number and types required. 13.08.180, fees when payment required. 13.08.240, materials placement. 13.08.290, approval of replacement services. 13.08.300, extension to more than one property. 13.08.320, purchase, installation, etc., by city. 13.08.330, property of city. 13.08.340, location. 13.08.350, repairs. 13.08.370, monthly reading. 13.08.380, right of entry to read, inspect, test, etc., failure to allow entry. 13.08.390, defacing, injuring, bypassing, etc. 13.08.410, computation when meter cannot read. 13.08.480, voluntary discontinuation of water service. 13.08.510, billing for service. 13.08.520, shutting water off for utility purposes. 13.08.530, size. 13.08.600, ownership and warranty. 13.08.620, water cooling systems. 13.08.650, use of supplemental water sources. And to establish, 13.08.670, cross connections and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Yes, your honor. The finance committee recommendations is for claims to be paid in the amount of $880,940.54. Manual checks in the amount of $39,437.29. Payroll liabilities for November 28th, 2018 in the amount of $450,121.57. For a total of $1,370,499.40.
Thank you. Anything else? The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes, sign the motion passes. Next item is introduction and oath of office of Riverton Police Department officers Christian Amos, Kingston Cole, Aaron Caffrey, and RPD dispatcher Andrew Par Tapiolo. Is that right?
Yes, sir. I've been practicing all day. I even called him and made sure it was right. Your honor, we have hired four new employees, and so with your permission, I would like to bring them up with their families and introduce them tonight.
You're right.
So Christian Amos, come on up with your family. Aaron Caffrey, Kingston Cole, and Andrew Par Tapiolo. Just right here. So, your honor, first, I would like to introduce Christian Amos. Christian was born and raised in the Riverton area. He's married, has a one-year-old son, and he loves to play basketball. Aaron Caffrey, to my left, was born and raised in Colorado. He worked for the Honor Farm before joining the Riverton Police Department family, and he's also a volunteer fireman. We won't hold that against him.
So which end of the rope does he get on?
He's been teased a little bit, I can tell you that. Next is Andrew Par Tapiolo. He is a native of northern Colorado, grew up in Fort Collins. He's married and had, for two years, and has a child on the way, and he spent eight years with the US Forest Service as a firefighter. Some of that time was in communications, and so we hired him as a dispatcher, and he's doing a fantastic job. I save Kingston Cole for last. Kingston is a very interesting young man. He's married, has a three-month-old daughter, and here's what makes him interesting. He has hiked the Pacific Crest Trail, which was a five-month hike. Now, as I came in, he said, "Well, I have something even more interesting than that if you want to bring it up." Kingston did six marathons in six days to raise $10,000 for MS. Sorry, I get emotional. His wife is a freelance writer. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, if you would come down and swear in our new officers, that would be fantastic.
That's, that's great.
I get a little emotional.
For the family, if you guys want to come up and take pictures, you're more than welcome.
Okay, I'll see if I can hog this so that everybody can hear. Raise your right hands, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm, repeat after me.
I solemnly swear and affirm, sir.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the office.
Terrific.
Congratulations.
You bet.
Welcome.
Welcome, Officer Amos.
Welcome, sir.
Congratulations.
So that's great, chief. Now, we're fully staffed, is that right?
Sir, we have one more officer.
Oh, one more to go, huh?
Then we'll be fully staffed.
Isn't that amazing?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty good. I'll bet the other guys on the force are excited to have the support, right?
We are all very excited.
Good, thank you. a liquor license transfer of location for Maverick Incorporated. Could I have the city clerks report, please?
Thank you, your honor. Mayor and council, before you tonight, for consideration is a retail liquor license transfer of location application submitted by Maverick, Inc. for the remainder of the 2018-2019 licensing year. In the application submitted, Maverick, Inc. is requesting authorization to transfer the liquor license. the liquor license from 601 South Federal Boulevard to 1604 West Main Street. Pursuant to Riverton Municipal Code 5.04.020-F4, establishments that primarily sell for off-premise consumption shall maintain a separate area for the sale of alcohol or malt beverages. In the application submitted, Maverick included a drawing that depicts the dispensing area as a 10-foot-by-7-foot area, which is located behind the front counter where only Maverick employees are allowed. The location within the proposed dispensing area would house a small freestanding rack which would hold the licensed product. The license holder is currently in good standing with the City of Riverton. The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application as complete and the proper fees have been paid and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the retail liquor license transfer of location application as presented, and I believe that there is representation from Maverick here tonight as well.
Just a minute. Just hang on just a second, okay? Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? So, now it's your turn.
I'm Roger Packer. I'm a district manager for Maverick. I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any about the move of the license.
Okay. Well, maybe there'll be some questions.
Okay.
So why don't you maybe, I don't know how to do this, folks. I'm sure that there's some people here who would like to comment on this.
Should I talk through what?
You tell us what, you tell us everything you think we should hear.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have a liquor license at our old store that we tore down, and we'd like to just hang on to that license in case we build a new building. But to do that, from what I understand, we need to put that into a home where it's being used. We can't just park it. And so we need to put that into our current store. We're not planning on expanding anything there. We're not putting in a beer vault or anything. We're just going to do the very minimal to try to have the sales required to keep the license, which would be a small four-foot rack. It's like six inches wide and it's actually two feet wide and six inches deep and it's four feet tall. And it'd just have very minimal liquor there so that it'd be back out of the way and we can get the minimum sales that we need to just keep the license. Then, pending, you know, if we find another place to build a new store and something that we'd like to move that to, then we would still have that license available. So our plan is to just try to maintain the license more than anything.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Question, would they lose the license if they don't use it right away? I don't know who would direct that.
Your Honor, I defer that to our city clerk.
Okay.
Your Honor, according to our code, a license can be non-operational for one year with an additional one year upon council approval for extenuating circumstances. So they could transfer it to the location, to a different location, but have it non-operational for one year.
And then we could renew that again for another year if you, if they hadn't built yet?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'd be renewed without having to have any sales?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Our office understanding was that there had to be a minimum of $2,000 sales, so they were going to just do a minimal rack there, but...
So, is that, what is the minimum sale?
Your Honor, the minimum sale for an active license is $2,000 per year for a retail license. That's correct.
Okay. It used to be 750, right?
No.
Or am I thinking of something else?
I think you're thinking of something else.
Is that a state statute?
State statute?
Yes.
Maximum fine for city court violation.
It's $750, right? Okay, I knew that number came up someplace.
And then, Your Honor, one more question.
Okay.
Do you guys intend to build another facility somewhere else in Riverton?
It's always our intention to grow, but anything specific, I don't know of. I know that they've looked for property several times, but I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. All right, so you've given us the lowdown on this, so let's give these other folks an opportunity to visit with us. So does anybody else want to talk to us about this? And let me, let me, well, let me just say, let me just say this. I'm sure that many of you will say the same thing, okay? So we don't need to hear it 50 times, but, you know, so if you've got something new to add, then jump in. So, you waved your hand.
Can everybody hear me? My name is Brad Crawford. I just wanted to discuss a little bit, maybe ask some questions that revolve around this liquor license. My first question would be if we don't transfer it as a city to this other location and they were to lose this license, would we have the power, or you per se as a council, to be able to do away with this license as a city whole?
It's my understanding that if the license is lost through disuse, it's gone. And the reason for that is, right now, that we have more liquor licenses in Riverton than what the formula allows. And so then that license would simply disappear.
Okay. And so that's my understanding as well, and we can see it. We have a lot of liquor licenses around here. My biggest concern with this is, is we have an issue citywide with intoxication in alcohol. I don't believe solving that problem means that we put in another location where we can sell more alcohol. It kind of defeats the purpose of trying to deal with the intox problems that we have in Riverton already. So I strongly advocate, as a community member, as somebody that lives in the Big Bend area up there, that we do not allow this liquor license to transfer. And I would suggest going a step further and trying to get rid of some of these liquor licenses that we have and doing the job that you already are, trying to fight and battle this intox problem that we have in Riverton. I think a common sense step would be first and foremost, not allowing more liquor to be sold in one of our stores and our fine community of Riverton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Justin Taylor. I am actually speaking for about 42 residents that live in the Big Bend area. We, one of our neighbors wrote this letter to the council. It says, excuse me, "Mayor Baker and Council, I have heard about the Maverick liquor license transfer request by word of mouth over the weekend. I typed up a letter of concern and approached friends and neighbors of the big Wyoming subdivision on Monday to hear their opinions. Only one person knew of the transfer request. Half of the homeowners did not receive the Riverton Ranger, and others missed seeing it in the paper. All were against having a 24-hour liquor store in our neighborhood." So within 24 hours, we have 42 signatures that we would like to give to you saying that we do disagree with having this. We would prefer to not have this in our neighborhood. As the gentleman said before, it is something that we need to address as a city. And moving it closer to a great subdivision that we have up at the big Wyoming subdivision would probably hurt us more than help us. And I would agree with the person that said before, we need to tackle this head-on instead of allowing another situation like this to occur. So, if we had more time, I'm willing to bet that we could have gone more to our neighbors and get additional signatures. So if you'd like that, we can definitely do that. But I was just asked to come forward to speak with you guys, showing that in that short amount of time, we just have a lot of neighbors needing to have their voices heard. So, where would you guys like to have that?
You could bring it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm co-owner of Sweetwater Garden with my wife, Holly. And we're definitely against this. Every year up there, we see more and more vandalism and theft out of our backlot. I mean, we try very hard to be a good neighbor up there, a good business to be in that neighborhood. We work really hard with Maverick to have an excellent working relationship, and I think that this kind of puts a damper on that a little bit. We don't need that sort of clientele or that sort of customer up there. We don't want them panhandling in our parking lot. You know, I'd just like to say that we're adamantly against this.
Thank you.
Harold Beefus, a resident of 2065 West Bend Avenue. I was not a member of that signing petition. We were out of town or we just didn't meet at that time. I would like the council to consider, with the enormous amount of foot traffic that we have from the low-income housing, I am constantly, as well as other neighbors, picking up whiskey bottles, beer cans, pop cans, et cetera. And I don't think that it would behoove the council to approve this. And with all due respect to this gentleman, that Big Bend Edition shouldn't be held hostage, if you will, or liable just for the sake of trying to maintain their license. That's a corporate decision they should have been looking at long before now, rather than extending this for a year and say, "Our intention isn't to build now." But what is that intention eight months from now? And there's adequate supply with Smith's Liquor Store there. I don't see any need or justification for having that license moved there, and in particular with the justification of just using a two-foot, four-foot room, what have you. It seems like there's almost a potential manipulation, if you will, to exceed or circumvent the law. But as a homeowner and taxpayer, I completely oppose it. I did go around the neighborhood this evening trying to let people know, because some of them still weren't aware of this. So, as our representatives, I would urge you to strongly consider before you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 1507 West Park Avenue. I'm the pastor of the Christian Church of Riverton at 1524 West Main. And not to take up a bunch of your time, I primarily want to echo and corroborate and reaffirm what's already been said. There is no pressing need for another liquor outlet. I do have a question. What you described sounds like it's primarily going to be a shooter rack. Is that correct? Everybody knows what shooters are, right? Tiny little, yeah. It's my opinion, I'm begging you to not let this transfer happen. I recognize their right, not arguing against their right. I think Maverick will be fine if they can't sell liquor in Riverton.
My name's Kim Wilbert. I also live in that neighborhood and my signature, nor my wife Wendy's, is on that petition that you folks have received, so I'm sure we support that, too. I'm pretty firmly against this idea, and one point that hasn't been brought up that I'd like you guys to consider is Maverick's, well, actually, I'm kind of opposed to selling liquor in any convenience stores in Riverton. The track record that we've had so far just simply wouldn't, to my mind, make that a good idea in anybody's estimation. But Maverick Corporation in particular has been the one company that's tried to operate a convenience store in Riverton with a liquor license, and it was such a colossal failure that the corporation ended up raising the building. So, it, to me, is kind of a very questionable decision for the community to allow another go at that, and it kind of amazes me that Maverick even wants to consider that. But that's my opinion, and that's another angle to consider, I think.
Sorry, I'm really nervous. I'm Kirby Despain, and I'm actually coming up on behalf of a couple of my coworkers at the Riverton Branch Library. And as you know, it's a community library, so everyone is welcome to come. But we do have a problem with the alcoholism at the library, too. Probably almost every single day, we have to call the police department, and I think Chief Murphy knows that, to where we don't even call 911. We have a number specific to call them because we always have intoxicated individuals at the library. Normally, we don't kick people out or anything like that, but we have people that will pass out in the outside or inside, and so then that's when they have to leave. So I know that if we had a liquor license at Maverick, especially with how close it is to the library, it would exacerbate that a lot. And we try to make sure that everyone is welcome at the library, but with all our kids that come and all our programming that we do, I just know that that would increase with how many people would come and be intoxicated, because we will find, we find hand sanitizer bottles empty all over in the library, and we find little, like, shooters all over in the library of people that come, and that's all they sit and do in the chairs. And so, on behalf of some of me and some of my coworkers, we are definitely against that because we know it would cause a lot more issues. And then, you know, if people don't come to the library, then, you know, that would be not very good. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city officials, my name is Becky, and I live on West Park Avenue as well. I really don't have a whole lot different to add, Mr. Mayor, other than I would echo many of the sentiments that you have already heard. I also would like to ask, if memory serves me correctly, the Maverick over on North Main did in fact close as a result of burglaries and violence directly related to the liquor sales at that store? Is that correct?
South Federal.
South Federal, excuse me. So I would like to know if this license is transferred, what's going to be different? I know that many of us have had or do have school-age students, high school-age students that frequent this Maverick before school, after school, during lunch, late-night hours, after ballgames, so on and so forth. And if I may, please correct me if I'm wrong, then would it, what about the scenario of these school kids? What if they're in a situation, coming home from a ballgame late at night, and there's someone that goes in and attacks the clerk, who's working alone on the night shift, and your student is in there getting a Coke? Don't we have a duty and an ethical obligation to protect everyone? Not just the liquor license? Not just Maverick? Who, I agree, you're going to be fine without this liquor license. I was asked tonight to read a statement that was given to me by Cody Beers, who could not be here. He just asked that it be on the record. Members of the Riverton City Council, Mr. Mayor, I live within a block of West Main Maverick, and I can tell you during this time that the West Main Maverick, with its current business plan, has been a good neighbor. But if you move in this direction, we will see the same out-of-control situation manifest itself on West Main Street that we all witnessed on South Federal Boulevard. It was a fiasco and further damaged the reputation of our city. West Main Street is a strong residential area with hundreds of families near Riverton Middle School, Riverton High School, Central Wyoming College, and the Riverton Branch Library. These residents are a mix of elderly people and families who live in this area for the quality of life, the quiet, peaceful neighborhoods, and safety of the area. Maverick doesn't have a good record with its past sales of Maverick doesn't have a good record with its past sales of alcohol on South Federal Boulevard. It would be deeply troubling for the same activity to occur on our West Main Street. This evidence is deeply tied to police records, numerous robberies, violence, et cetera. There are plenty of places to purchase alcohol quite close to West Main Maverick, so that's not the issue. Please don't go here. The best decision for Riverton is to deny this liquor license transfer. There's no guarantee that the company owned by Maverick will follow through with its future plans. No permits have been filed with the city for a move to the north end of town. No business plan has been presented to the city for approval, and there's much uncertainty at this point. Simply taking into account what happened on South Federal, this proposal is crazy. Please vote no, period. This is not a good move for the future of West Main Street and the city of Riverton. This is our neighborhood. Please listen to the citizens who will be representing us at the city council meeting. They represent me and the people who live here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kayla Bogast, and I am...I live with my family on the...in the Big Bend area, and I am also a student at the Riverton Middle School. After school, some of my friends go to the library, and after the library, they like to stop at Maverick to get some candy bars and some drinks. And I am afraid that if you guys do decide to add alcohol to...the sale to alcohol...for people to be able to sell alcohol at Maverick, I am afraid that more violence is going to happen, and I'm afraid that some of my friends and other people who attend the school are going to get hurt and are going to see more influence of alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Wendy Bartow, and I live across from the church and across from the library on the corner of Major and Park. There are just a couple of things I wanted to ditto. First, the kids, that there is a steady stream of kids, coming from the high school mostly, and during the day, but they are coming to eat their lunch at Maverick. And so, it's a...there's a large kid population that hangs out in that area. I also want to say that most of the people in my area did not get a paper, because we're having problems with delivery, so that the...there are many people that don't know about this, obviously. But my last thing is that there's no parking at Maverick. Because of the way the pumps are set up, people coming just to go to the store have to pull past the pumps to park in front of the store, and if there's added purchases from Maverick, if there's more people coming there to buy liquor, I don't know where they're going to park or how. It's very difficult to maneuver around there, too. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Matt Beebout. I live in the West Bend area. I don't believe this is a good idea for the community. I'm a very frequent to the Maverick myself, but the alcohol issue is trouble. You know, especially having it out on a rack. They have it in a secure area down on Federal, and it still had a lot of problems with it. We also have another alcohol permit starting up there on the hill, correct? 307 Liquors. So, I don't...I think having another one up on the hill is a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Bruce Berg. I live on Gannett Drive. I guess I got a question. Is this going to be decided tonight?
It could be.
Okay. I think that's not in the best interest of the people affected. Nobody in my neighborhood knew anything about this. I didn't until my sister saw it on the Internet or something like that and called me. I don't know, I can speak for a couple of people that I called tonight before I came up here on Gannett, that were not in favor of this. And it has nothing to do with Maverick, although what happened down on South Federal doesn't...isn't a very good track record. But there's plenty of alcohol available in Riverton, as you've heard a dozen times before me, and you're probably going to hear again, but I'm not in favor of this. So, just as a geographical, to expand the footprint a little bit, it extends down to Gannett Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Teri Kachara. I'm an educator here in Riverton, and I think that I need to also remind you that you are role models in this city, and that you influence what students and young people also think. So, please keep that in mind. I don't think this is a good initiative.
My name is Sean Griffin, and I don't live in Riverton. I work here. I've got a lot of friends here, of course. We live right outside the city limits. But the reason I'm here is I do have some friends that live in that neighborhood, and I think that one of the questions, you said, Mr. Mayor, that it may be solved tonight. I think then maybe there should be some discussion further, because it sounds like there's some misinformation or some misunderstanding as far as what they need to do to maintain their liquor license. I'm all for private business, and I know you guys are in a hard spot with this whole situation, because it is a private business, following and jumping through all the hoops they have to do to maintain this. But it also sounds like this license may be able to be suspended for a year, and then with special consideration, a year after that. And I would at least think that maybe that discussion should take place, and also with Maverick, because it might fall into their plans. I don't know. It seems like right now, they're kind of just doing this, going through the process just to maintain their license. They're going to put a little rack in there. It might even be easier for them not to have to go through all that, if they could suspend the license and maybe get a reconsideration while they plan what they're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sarah McCurci. I live in the big Wyoming subdivision. I just learned about this today, actually got a phone call at work talking about it. I also am for, you know, businesses being successful in Fremont County, and I want to see us grow. But I don't think that this is necessary, even if they built a bigger place or another place. I don't think it's even necessary for it to be transferred there or for them to sell alcohol out of there. There are plenty of places. I like beer as much as the next person, but I can go to other places to get it. I don't need to go down to the Maverick to do it. There's a lot of safety concerns that I have, being a resident in that area, specifically, you know, just the kids coming. I have children of my own. I'm a little nervous. There's only, like, sick people up here. So, anyways, I have children of my own, and, you know, the riffraff that comes from all of the alcohol use and abuse in our community, I'm afraid that that will kind of come down into our housing subdivision, and I just don't want to see it. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I swore I wasn't going to do this. I'm Jerry Kinsler. I own Jerry's Flowers and Things, and I also live on Gannett Drive. I also like a good beer. I think everyone is saying the same thing. Reconsider their transfer, but give them time to do something with their license. We have an image in our town, and it's changing drastically with people on the street intoxicated. No one knows that more than you and the police force. All of us need to work hand in hand to improve what we're becoming. When people come into our town, of course, you hear about the park. Well, we have that same image on West Main. We didn't used to see it so much, but as we extend our lower housing areas, and those folks need places to live, if we start handing everything out, making it more convenient, I'm afraid someone's going to get hit up there on West Main. The highway department took the fence down along...across from Gannett, or above Gannett, across from the Maverick. And weekly, we have intoxicated people down in the trees and behind our fences, and we really watch for them on the road. I think the police departments are going to get more and more calls about people in the road instead of squirrels and dogs. So, I think we need to work on our image in our community. We have bigger problems than just the park. We have them on majors, we have them on the canal banks, we have them on the bike path. I think all of us need to try and curb the problem and help these people and help each other. So, I'd like you to reconsider the transfer, but that doesn't mean you need to take it away from them. You've given them an alternative that they obviously did not know about. So, please consider what's going on in West Main and what's happening in our community. As a businessperson, we hear it and see it. I see intoxication downtown every morning when I open my door, and let's try and get behind it and get these people some help. Thank you.
Thank you. So, excuse me, just a minute. I've got a question about process here. Is there...on the licensing thing? Okay, so, the day that the South Federal Maverick quit selling alcohol is what starts the clock on the license, or they have to find some place to park it?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Anytime there's a change to a liquor license, the governing body has to approve it. So, if they are going to be non-operational, the governing body would have to approve that. Now, to Mr. Becker's defense, all of our correspondence was through the corporate office, through Salt Lake, Utah, and they were notified that they could put the license as non-operational. At that time, they decided that they don't want to, that they wanted to be able to keep it active, but they did have the option to do that at the time.
Okay. Okay, so, but the clocks...but then they have to move that license someplace. They can't just leave it at South Federal, the empty lot.
Because it's an empty lot, the building was what was licensed, so there's no building left. They do own the property there, so if we do...if you do transfer it to the West Main location, you can say that it'll be non-operational. It doesn't have to be active. It can be non-operational, and that would start the one-year clock.
I see. Okay. All right. Anybody else in the audience have any...okay.
Hi, my name is Trystine Grover, and I'm the director at the homeless shelter.
I'm Michelle Widmer, and I'm the director of Eagles Hope Transitions.
And we are also on the solutions committee. I am chair, and she is vice chair. And I think that, from what we're hearing in the audience, one of the big things that keeps coming up is the need to be able to do something about the intoxication. And while I think that we need to really look at Maverick as being one of the business owners that is in good standing, but they're also needing those tools in order to implement how to best deal with the intoxication problem. And I think that on the next part of your guys' agenda, that is being able to be addressed, which might be able to address some of the concerns that the citizens are having as of tonight.
We work in this field. We are on the grounds every day. We're the ones that have to turn people away because they're intoxicated, and we know where they're getting their alcohol. And we are just trying to do whatever we can to help the situation, because we know this is a real problem. We face it every single day. It's life or death. We have both lost residents due to this. And like she said, you know, this is a problem, and we are trying to find a solution to help this problem.
At the same time, we need more business owners that are like Maverick, that are trying to do everything, and they're doing their job. They're doing their due diligence, but they need those tools in order to do what we need to fight the intoxication problem.
Thank you. I think we've had our say, huh?
Wants to start over.
Okay, no. No, okay, so, I don't see anybody else that wants to talk. The chairman entertained a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved that we...and seconded, that we close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be closed. So, the next item of business is the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the liquor license transfer to location for Maverick, Inc. on West Main. So, the next...so, I don't have a motion, okay? So, I think what that leaves you with, Mr. Becker, is...Becker, is it?
Packer.
Backer?
Packer.
Packer? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that right. Okay, so, I...
It has to come from the council, correct?
I think you can come back to us with a different proposal, that if you wanted to park the license inactively, we might be receptive to that.
Mayor, there's some shaking of the head going from Ms. Watson.
No. No. Ms. Watson says that isn't right.
Your Honor, if I may, tonight, the council needs to either approve or deny the transfer.
We need to approve it or deny it.
We can't get a second. We can't get a first.
We can't get a motion or a second.
Motion to deny.
Why does that have to be done tonight? Why can't this thinking about that it may be...put it on, let them have it, only if they're going to leave it inactive and then decide later? Why does it have to be decided tonight? Yes or no?
Your Honor, pursuant to state statute, our advertising requirement is to advertise for two consecutive weeks and then hold a public hearing for the approval or denial of the license. The applicant has paid the application fee and has paid the advertising costs, and now it's the council's responsibility to them to either approve or deny, to hear the application through approval or denial.
Just as a point of order, typically, we cannot make a motion in the negative. You're saying in this situation, if we're saying it's to deny, we could make a motion to that end? I would so move we deny the transfer.
Now, the point of order, I think the appropriate thing would be making a motion to approve the license transfer, and then we can either approve or deny that motion. That would be the appropriate...we have a lawyer in the House.
We have a parliamentarian over here.
So, Mr. Mayor, a motion to deny is a positive motion.
That's what I thought.
Negative one is, I move we don't approve. That's negative. So, if he moves to deny, then that's a proper motion.
And I stand by my motion to deny the transfer.
Second.
Moving seconded. Now, is there any discussion?
So, you have to approve to deny, is that right?
That's right. That's right. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Denied. So, we had to work through the parliamentary procedure on that in order to make it work right.
Thank you all for coming.
Your Honor.
Yes.
And I guess, you know, while we have all these ears in the House, this alone will not solve the intoxication problem that we have in Riverton, okay? And we have things coming before us that where we're looking at trying to do things about that, but we could close down half of the alcohol establishments in Riverton, and we're not going to solve the problem. Riverton, and we're not gonna solve the problem. Okay? The, the 99.99999% people that live in this city, that buy alcohol legally, use it appropriately, et cetera, are not where the problem is. Okay? And so just purely denying a liquor license is not gonna solve our problem. Now, I would agree that creating 10 more is not gonna solve our problem either, but we need help coming up with solutions. And so I, I would like everybody to really sincerely think about what we could do that would make a difference with the alcoholism and the vagrancy and the issues that go along with that. Okay? And it's not throwing people in jail and throwing away the key, you know, and, and so there's, you know, there's a million things that people have approached me about, but none of them are a solution to this problem. And so we are trying sincerely, through the Solutions Committee and other ways, to find a solution to this problem, but it is not gonna be easily solved. And so I hope we don't point the finger at any certain business or individuals and think they are the cause of this problem, because all of us sitting in this room are not the cause of this problem, so.
Can any of us come to the Solutions Committee with questions?
Yes. Lance would tell you when they meet.
We meet next, next Thursday, the 13th, here at, at City Hall.
What time, Lance?
At 5:30. 5:30 on 13th is the next Solutions Committee meeting.
Second and fourth Tuesday of each month.
Yes.
The next item of business tonight is ordinance 18-013, third and final reading, habitually intoxicated person. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 18-013 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number 18-013 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title IX, Peace, Morals, and Welfare, to revise Chapter 9.08, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, to establish Section 9.08.120, selling etc. of alcohol to declared habitually intoxicated persons, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-013 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, again, I know we've gone through multiple readings of this ordinance, and I, I would like to repeat what I said during the first reading, is that I think this ordinance shifts the burden of, um, solving this problem to the business owners and their employees, and it does not focus the problem on the people that are causing the problem. I think it focuses the people that are trying to work and make a living and do their business legitimately and legally, according to our rules. And if we do pass this, I'm sure they will do their darndest to try to do that, but I think this shifts an unfair burden on those businesses and employees. And then I think it also will bring some other interesting challenges liability-wise and legality-wise and all of that. So I, I think, I know that we've put a lot of work into this, and the Solutions Committee has worked hard on this, and a lot of people have been talked to, but again, I have had more calls on this issue than I have almost any other issue, and, and so I, I think this is probably not a good idea. I think we need to keep looking for better solutions.
Lance, go ahead.
Your Honor, um, I, one of the comments made in the earlier, um, hearing struck me, and I, I think that's the tone of, of my comment, is that while we have attempted for years to make the people responsible for violating public intoxication laws, um, we have, we need to broaden the scope, and we all need to be a part of the solution. The whole community needs to be a part of the solution. And if we only keep asking the people who have a problem, the, the intoxicated people that, that are, are struggling, um, if, if we continue to do that, the only solution is, is to keep jailing them and fining them, and quite honestly, that's not working. I don't believe this ordinance or the other one that we'll get to later are, and I've said this before, as I know you've stated before, Mike, from, from your perspective, but this is not a magic bullet, never expected it to be a magic bullet, and, but it is an attempt to share the responsibility. The whole community has to share responsibility for this problem if it's going to be solved. If we intend to ask the people who have, struggle with alcoholism or, or homelessness, if we continue to say you're the only ones that can fix this problem, it will never be fixed. That's all I have.
Got it.
Go ahead, Tim.
And Lance, I, I agree with you completely that this is not something that is going to be solved without more effort. I guess the only issue that I'm having with this, and, and I've, I've thought a lot about this from the first time we talked about it, when it was proposed in Solutions, uh, at the subsequent meetings, and the issue that I'm having is, yes, everybody needs to try to come together to figure out what to do, but coming at them with the full force of the government, full force of the police force, and saying, "You're going to do this or you're going to be punished," is a bit hard to swallow for me. Um, and although I think in theory, in theory, that this gets us to a solution, because we've talked about this cutting off supply, and that's what we've been discussing all along, has been, you know, we compare it, or I've compared it to, from the first time we talked about it, making it so Sudafed is behind the counter. Easy way to make it so it's more difficult to cook methamphetamine. Uh, you cut off the ingredients, you cut off the supply. But the problem is, if this isn't going to be a solution, if this is not going to make a difference, if the enforcement isn't gonna be enough to make this happen to make a change, then making all of our business owners, our community members, and everybody go through all of the trouble to have to keep track of these people and to say we're not gonna serve to them, I just don't know if it's the right move. And, um, now, I have had the one positive kind of feedback that I've gotten from business owners has been, uh, people that say, "Well, this makes it so it's easy for me to say, 'I'm not gonna serve to you,' because you're on the list." Gives them an easy out. But I'm gonna tell you, as a business owner, if you know somebody, you know their name, you know that they're being arrested, whether you're being threatened with a $750 fine or not, please, on your own, say, "I'm not gonna serve them." I don't think we have to have this ordinance in place to give you that out. Take it on your own. And I think if our business owners do that, will have the same effect as this anyway, without having to go through all of the enforcement and making sure that people don't serve to people on the list. So I, I think that this is a good idea in theory, but I think in terms of actually punishing people for not doing this, it seems like it's a bit of an enforcement nightmare. Um, and I think frankly, with all of the things that our Riverton Police Department has to enforce already, getting them out there to try to enforce liquor license dealers or liquor license holders or anybody that's serving alcohol and trying to have them be criminalized, I just, it's, it's hard for me to swallow.
Just a short one. Um, you know, the impact on businesses certainly can't be denied, and, and I, in some of the discussions that we've had in Solutions Committee, uh, from liquor license holders and, and from citizens as well, is that there are a number of businesses, and actually probably a vast majority of the businesses that sell liquor in this community, who this won't have any difference in way they already run their business. They will, they're already doing this because they're good citizens and they're good business owners. And unfortunately, there are businesses in the community that don't. They're, they're not good businesses. And this provides the opportunity to hold them accountable, when right now, they won't hold themselves accountable. And, and I, I mean, I, I totally hear what you're saying, Tim, that it's, it's a shame that we have to use the government and enforcement to, to hold them accountable, um, but we know of instances in which they have not been held accountable, and there's nothing to keep them from being accountable. I mean, they're, it, and I, I think this is an opportunity. I, I do believe that there are a lot of businesses that, other than the amount of time that's necessary to distribute the list, to notify them, which I, I appreciate for the amount of time that that, it's going to take, um, they're not going to notice that big of a difference, because they're already doing this. Now they can say exactly what you said, "Sorry, now I can officially not serve you because you're on the list. I wasn't doing it before, but now I have the government's backing to say, 'You cannot. I cannot serve you.'" It just seems like a, a possible win situation, and it holds those that are not doing the right thing accountable.
So we're ready to vote. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Nay.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Nay.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Nay.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote no, it doesn't pass. Uh, the next i, uh, item on the agenda is ordinance number 18-014, third and final reading, serving prohibited habitually intoxicated person. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 18-014 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed ordinance number 18-014 on third and final reading, and ordinance amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, to revise Chapter 5.04, Alcoholic Beverages, revising Section 5.04.040, sale etc. to habitual drunkard, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-014 on third and final reading.
So moved. Or second, whichever.
Okay. Lance moved, Kyle seconded. Discussion? These kinda go hand in hand, so. Okay, would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Nay.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Nay.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Nay.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote no. Motion fails. Consideration of Riverwalk improvements, City Administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. After those items, this is slightly lighter. Um, what you have before you this evening is the proposed project for the Riverwalk improvements. The Riverwalk is maintained through ID, Inc. and the Depot Foundation. The proposed project is the installation of three cameras, a light pole, and a light for that property. The attached map is provided for your consideration to illustrate how that will be, um, how that, how those cameras will record and in what areas. The intent of the improvements is to provide for a safer environment, um, for recreation and, for recreation and use of that property. As it is improved, and, and I know we have spent a great deal of time talking about how the, how that can be used, there's some other proposed improvements to that. There is the fire pit over in that area. These, these improvements are all paid for through the Depot Foundation via ID, Inc., that proposed the project. The estimated costs are provided for you and are about $7,346. That may increase a little bit, uh, if there are some additional costs, but those are, uh, already being paid for. So the city in and of itself is not paying for that. At the end of the day, there's an in and an out. We receive the revenue, we have the expenditure. The reason it is before council is for two reasons. One, the project actually, um, is installed off of the Riverwalk. And secondly, um, it, because it is running through the city and we are managing, we're managing it with our IT department and our staff, that is an increase in, in our budget, and therefore, we're asking your authorization, because that will overexpend that budget. Of course, there is the, there is the offsetting revenue. As such, we would, we would recommend, uh, that council approve the proposed improvements and, uh, direct staff to execute all documents, and we would stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Um, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, improvements at, uh, on the Riverwalk.
Motion to, uh, approve the Riverwalk improvements.
Second.
Mike?
Um, question, so the, uh, Depot Foundation's gonna pay for the pole and the cameras and all that stuff, and those, RPD is going to monitor those, that video?
Your Honor, yes, the, the intention of the, the cameras, the radios, the, uh, hook-in to RPD, yes, the intention of this is to make sure that RPD can see it.
And then RPD already has the equipment that's capable of receiving that signal, video, whatever you wanna call it?
Yes, the, yeah, the improvements will allow for it. We do have to add certain items to, but those are being paid for.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I, I like this idea. The only thing that I've been thinking of is I just saw on Facebook, this is not what you think.
True, then.
Yeah. No, I just saw on Facebook that the Central Wyoming Skating Association is asking for donations again for the lighting, because they've been paying for the lighting over there at the skate park, which is actually in our city park. And it just kinda feels like, if we're gonna approve something like this, we oughta pony up and pay for the lighting for city park for the Central Wyoming Skating Association.
How much is that, uh, GM, do you know?
He put it on.
Five?
I thought it was 250, uh, we can look it up.
Well, the current balance, like, there was a year amount, and then what they needed to pay now to get up to current.
It's not a lot.
What was the year amount? Do you remember?
It's 250 in some period of time. Now, whether it was a month or-
Hold on one moment.
And, and I'm not trying to say that that's a negative on this, but I'm just kinda like, if we're gonna sit here and, and pay and get a camera and lighting and all that over at, at the Riverwalk, they've, he's been, he's been biding his time. Right, which isn't city park.
500 for a whole year of lighting, $500.
And he's been doing very well, getting money from members, uh, and people have been ponying up, and they've been getting that money in there, but I just, putting a bug in everybody's ear and maybe Mr. Tolsted's ear or something, in terms of maybe, I'll reach out to him or you could or something, and see if he could come in front of the council and request that officially, but I just, it doesn't make sense to go through this expense and not go through that very, very minimal expense.
Your Honor, we'll be happy to reach out and provide something for council at the next meeting.
Okay.
Your Honor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you gonna talk about the, the Riverwalk?
Yes.
All right.
Um, I, I was trying to read real quickly, and, and there's reference to radios, but I don't understand the purpose of a radio for this project.
Your Honor, if I may, um, and you're gonna ask me an IT question, I'm gonna do my best here, okay? So essentially, the intent of the radios, in this case, is to transfer the signal back.
Repeaters, you mean?
That's-
It's, it's a digital camera that can send it over a radio, to a tower, to city.
Okay.
So it's a repeating-
So it's a transmitter and a receiver, not a, necessarily a radio?
Transmitter can be used too, if it's-
A radio like what Chief Murphy carries around, that's a radio.
I'm sorry. We'll call it transmitters from now on.
Okay.
And we won't say detention facilities.
Right, right. Get the terminology right.
Right, right. Get the terminology right.
Okay, so I see on the map, these highlighted green areas, that's the intended coverage of the camera system?
Yes, Your Honor. That's an approximation, but yes.
It's a pretty small area.
Your Honor, I had noticed, and I know Councilwoman Schatz is a frequent visitor in this area, but there has been some damage down there in the fire pit area. I think this is an opportunity to kind of increase the security in that area, to give a little bit more. Even as things develop over time, there's already been some damage that's occurred, and if we could start working on preventing that, it's going to save us a lot of money in the long run, or the Depot Foundation, or whomever, so.
Okay.
Your Honor, just as a quick note, these are approximations of the, of the areas. What we would seek to do is work to maximize the area that those cameras are covering as much as we can.
Okay. Anything else?
Any question?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Council Committee reports, and Councilmember Roundtable. Is Schatz?
Yes, Your Honor. First, I want to talk about this Saturday at 6:00 PM, we're doing Riverton's first ever tree lighting ceremony. We're very excited about it. Santa Claus is going to come. He's going to appear there that evening. We'll also have pictures for the kids, music playing in the background. This is going to be located behind the depot on the Rails to Trails, that big tree you see as you drive down the hill on Main Street. So we're very excited about that. The Parks Committee is the group that's put that on and contacted Santa and going to get him on his way. The next thing I want to talk about is the Rendezvous Games. As part of the Solutions Committee's, one of our goals is to bring the community together. We had a meeting last week, I believe, to finalize some stuff. First game's going to be February 3rd. We're going to start our advertising here in the next week. I'm going to be speaking with Megan Sims this, tomorrow, actually, and getting a Facebook event created, so we can start with registrations. We're very excited about those games. But other than that, I think that's all I have for today. Just make sure you bring your families to the tree lighting ceremony, and you could bring your own ornament, and you don't have to be kids, you could do it, you know, just with your family or yourself. It's, it's open to everybody. Hang your own ornament on the tree and take pictures with Santa Claus, 6:00 PM, Saturday, Rails Trails, behind the depot. Yes, Lance?
I had a question, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I was just curious about the ornaments. Is that something that individuals should plan on getting back after the season, or would the city just dispose of them if they, I was thinking about that just kind of logistically.
Right. Here's, here's what I would suggest, is that if you want to have that ornament back, you might not want to put it on the tree, because we can't guarantee that someone's not going to come by and swipe it. We would hope for the best, but I wouldn't put an ornament on there that you wanted to keep forever. So just with the, with the intention that it will not get returned.
That's this Saturday?
This Saturday, 6:00 PM, right.
Okay. Kyle, have you got anything for us tonight? Mike?
I have nothing.
Tim?
No, nothing.
I have one item, Your Honor. The rec board met last night. We had a pretty full house, and they're planning for the annual grant proposal meeting that is January 7th. And so it would, I think it would be really important for council to plan for what appointments are necessary for the rec board at that time, so that those council members can be a part of that process. That night is the first night that they'll hear proposals from all the community organizations. That's when they'll get their cop, the individual copies, or each member will get copies of the proposals. So I just kind of wanted to plant a bug in the ear of council and staff, that if, if those appointments are made as early as possible in the transition to the new council, that January 7th at 5:30 is their meeting, followed by the 6 o'clock grant proposal meeting. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Your Honor. I only have a couple items. The most important being the Webbwood Road, that project has applied for an extension for that closure due to some delays in the dewatering and the work on that project. Staff approved that, and so that has been extended to December 30th at this point. They had some problems with part of that project, and the individual, the company that was doing the dewatering wasn't able to actually do it, so they had to go look, and it held them up. We are attempting to move that forward as fast as possible, but we did want to let everybody know. So we will get that done as, as fast as we can. The master plan kicked off at meetings the other week, and we've had a number of different opportunities to hear some input from the public, but we're just getting started. I just wanted to make sure council understood and that we had an opportunity to let the public know, that the process that goes along with this, this significant project, is going to be going out into the public. It's, we're going to be meeting with different groups, and if individuals want to have their voices heard, there's many ways to do that, including attending, attending the focus meetings. But also, some of that information can be provided to us. We're going to be putting together a, or the consultant for this is going to be putting together surveys that we're going to push out as much as we possibly can. They'll go out on our, on our Facebook, on our webpage. We will ask our partners, and friends, and other organizations to share it. The more information we can get back, the better we're going to do here. So I would just like to keep that in front of everybody at this point, so everybody has that in their minds.
Excuse me. Just, just like tonight with the liquor thing, liquor license transfer, all that's been published in the newspaper for two weeks, you know, and we've talked about it and all that kind of stuff, and yet, large number of people had no idea that it was going on. And so I don't know what you have to do in order to reach out, okay? But obviously, we have to do something that goes beyond an ad in the paper.
Yes, Your Honor. I can tell you, one of the first things that is being done, other than obviously pushing it, we'll be pushing those meetings and the like on our social media sites, but we've target, we have targeted groups that we intend to be in front of, that we want to make sure that, okay, we've identified these groups. Those groups were identified during the kickoff meeting, and more will be identified as we go along. That's pretty normal. So to some extent, we are doing that, but any, we will make all the efforts that we can to try to do that, and we'll take those lessons and try to think about how we can do public engagement better. That's an ongoing effort. So we do appreciate those comments.
Okay, thank you.
I guess on a separate note, you can follow our Facebook page. Anybody out there that's listening or is curious, you can always follow our Facebook page. Now, I did notice, however, that we did not have tonight's agenda on there. We had the work session on there, but I don't see that we had tonight's. So maybe that's something we need to make sure we get on there, but-
My apologies, my oversight, my apologies. I'll fix it.
But anyway, if people want to be updated, one of the things you can do, follow the Facebook page. I'm done, sorry.
Your Honor, we have a force committee will be meeting on Monday, the 10th, and just keeping you updated, the BRC resolution for the Business Council application for the grant for the USDA processing facility will be in front of, is intended to be in front of you in a week, on the 11th. I have nothing else. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Kyle?
Tony, are we, we can have the ice rink in the, up at Donkin Stadium this year?
Your Honor, yes, sir, we are. They've got some of the first parts of that, and then the rest of it will be going in pretty soon.
I would bet this week we'll make some major advances weather-wise. They had to get it, it had to be really cold for them to start putting water down, because our rec kind of coordinates with the city on that, and from the college side of my life, there's been a lot of talk about, it just has to get cold enough. And this week, I think we're going to make it, so.
I was wondering how cold you had to be. I was, I was thinking I was there.
You were frozen?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, did I, do you have anything else, Tony?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, so mayor's, mayor's comments. I, I just, I guess the overriding concern that I had tonight on this intoxic, habitually intoxicated individual, was that we were putting liquor dealers in the way of a lawsuit, that, that people might sue them because they were discriminated against. I don't know that they would have prevailed on that, but the liquor establishments would be the guys that'd get named in the suit, and the city would have put the, put the, put the dealers in that position. And, and while it'd be okay, I guess, for them to sue the city, I, and I only have a couple of weeks to think about, to worry about this, but I have, I have much lower tolerance of being sued than, than John Vincent had. And, and so, he was ready to, he was ready to go to court on anything, but, so I've got less tolerance for that. But I can imagine, you know, somebody who's in business being faced with that, and, and you look at the length of time that a lawsuit drags on, that would be, that would be the end of the business, I think, in many cases, so. I just, I just felt like we were setting people up for trouble. And, and I didn't, I didn't want to do that. I honestly think that, that people who sell alcohol could be a significant part of the solution, but I just, I just didn't feel like this was the right thing to do. So, do we have an exec tonight?
Yes, Your Honor.
We do?
We do.
Well, okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of real estate, considering the site selection or purchase of real estate in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A7.
I move for extra innings.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. We stand convened into executive session at 8:35.
I guess, Your Honor.
PM, invite City Administrator Tony Tolsted, City Clerk Kristen Watson, and Community Development Director Eric Carr to attend the executive session. You want attorney? Okay.
We've got him here.
Rick, you come through. Any opposed? And we are back in regular session at 9:17?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.